My nation, our God, give us love with the liberty to be just as well.
Have you ever noticed how we do this much better in person than in person?
Yeah, I do sometimes, yes. All right, I will call the roll. Deanna Dykett?
Present.
Timothy West?
Present.
Kelly Hooper?
Present.
Joe Patrasi is not with us yet, but I believe he's coming. I have Josh Danway.
Present.
And I'm Richard.
Present.
And I'm also present. Adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments this evening.
Nice. I just wanted to throw out again, public comments can be put on the chat at any time and will be read during the public comments section later on in the evening. Just to remind everybody that you're welcome to do that. I undertake a motion to approve the minutes of the Winter School Committee meeting of May 5th, 2021 as writ or with corrections. So?
Second.
We've been seconded in discussion. Seeing none, I will call about all those in favor. Okay, the vote passes four to zero. Reports. Superintendent report.
Well, I covered most of it in my report that was sent out to you and mailed out to the community. There are some pretty significant updates and we were sort of promised last Thursday by Dan Shure from the Department of Education Deputy Commissioner that there'll be things coming flying out of his basket furiously, so I've been sending them out to you guys. And we haven't got any, getting a lot of this is being discussed, but this is being decided. But we haven't got any specific things from the DOB that, you know, that can specifically report. One thing I did send out to all of you, I'm gonna make sure I bring it to your attention, was I sent out this sheet, which is part of a figure, and you can all access, this is all public information on the Department of Education website, that I found this a little bit strange. The governor's budget has not passed. I think there's a, I very reasonably was going to it with the majority of Democrats in the House and in the Senate, so there's no reason to think it's not gonna pass. I think she has hopes that it will pass as an emergency piece of legislation, which puts it into effect immediately, as opposed to the regular process, which is 90 days after it's approved. But in any case, it has not been approved. So I found it very unusual for them to put out the projections if this passes and it's in EPS share goes to 55%, which is what, 15 years ago? Joe? Yeah. If that goes, doesn't need go to effect of what she's, you know, proposing. This is what the effect will be for us. So, there's a lot of numbers here, you worry about it or you don't worry about it, it doesn't really make the difference to me. And then as I'm looking at this now, the numbers actually didn't print in the first four or five columns, just as a date for whatever reason. But what's important is over on the far right inside, at the enacted 279, if you recall, this is what we get is that much for local. So, the, I'm sorry, the state chair and green, that's right next to it, is what the governor's package would do for Winthrop. So we would gain in that last column, the adjusted state share, we'd get additional points, $7,000, plus $8.80 and 7 cents. So, no guidance yet. I have nothing I can share with you respective, so what does that mean? Because I thought, when I first heard that she was proposing that, I thought it was gonna be FY '23. I think everybody, all my colleagues thought it was gonna be FY '23, because almost everybody's budget has been completed at this point. For some people, and thankfully, we're not one of them, there is a real sense of that that might save, they have some pretty significant increases. We are, you know, very fortunate that's not the case for us. So I have no idea, I can't really even speculate with you guys right now what would happen, what will happen. I did have a conversation with our attorney for a totally different reason, and he said he's been crazy dealing with the districts that are having these, you know, their money that they get from going to 55% will make, you know, every, a huge bit of difference for them. And I said, "I'm sure I'll be having a conversation with you at some point, but right now, we already have a budget that's, that has a decreased effect on the community." So, I really don't have any, anything to share with you other than this was sent to us, so I sent it to you. Yeah, I think the other things I want to talk about are all included on the agenda, so it's the appropriate time for those to take them up and talk about.
All right, so next, I guess, would you need?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I should have mentioned, I didn't do the appointments, or no, no appointments, retirements, or transfers. I do want to say that Margaret Martin, she's a grade five teacher, has submitted a resignation. I just, you know, she's, Maggie has, she's a first year teacher here, I think she's her second or third year overall. She came from North Carolina, I think. She's, she's a local young lady with the Kentville, and has just done an amazing job this year. Very, very sad that she is resigning, but she's staying home, she's having a baby. Any of you who've seen her lately, it's very evident she's having a baby. She's chosen to stay home with her child, so I can't fault her for that, and just, it's really sad because she was pretty amazing. She is pretty amazing, not was, she is amazing.
She is promised though, when she's ready to come back and teaching, she's calling us first. Well, we thank her for her service and wish her all the best for sure. Did you wanna do, did you wanna mention anything?
Oh, yeah, I put it in your packet, I mailed it to you too with the, I thought it was a very nice move on Governor Mills' Part II in her cabinet, to name all main school nurses, the 2021 School Nurses of the Year. I don't know how she could have possibly tried to pick somebody, because they've all done an amazing job, and our nurses have done an amazing job. And I, and I also mentioned it, the Back to School Committee, his meeting, we've now had our second meeting, Sue is representing you guys here. And we reviewed and outlined today, and put it, it's listed as a Google Doc, so any of the administrator, or any of the people, not just administrators who are on that committee, will start filling in, they joined some of the, the WA's doing the survey, the Megan is doing a survey for the rest of the staff as well, to get some input. And our goal, my goal, is to have a draft for you to consider by the time we, after we meet in June. But that's probably ambitious. Kelly and Joe will get a real kick out of this, I volunteered to write the draft again.
And everybody quickly says, "Not it."
I tried to give it to somebody else in the morning.
Okay, thank you. So for my check report, I got a couple, well, the committee and Jim got a couple of thank you letters for the bonuses that were handed out to the teachers, so I would like to take the time to read those, because they were very sweet. So the first one says, "Dear Winthrop School Committee and Superintendent Hodgkin, thank you very much for the bonus you included in my paycheck this week. It was totally unexpected, but very much appreciated. As a teacher in this district for 33 years, I can definitely say this is the first, the best job I have ever had. Thank you for your thoughtfulness and continued support. Sincerely, Maria Coffres." And the next one says, "To the Winthrop Public Schools Committee, I wanted to express my appreciation of the support you have given to all of the staff of the Winthrop Public Schools. This year has far surpassed any other year I've ever had in terms of difficulty. The continuous support of the school committee has meant a great deal to me. The Wednesday planning and preparation days, extra teachers for remote learning, extra funds for new instructional needs due to COVID-19, funds for health and safety of staff due to COVID-19, and the recent bonus. All of this has been deeply appreciated by me. Thank you so mu- very much for your support, Shelby Bryley, teacher at the Winthrop Mills." But I just wanted to share that with everybody. Thank you. And we can move on to the committee reports. Bye now.
Nothing new.
Nothing. Okay, policy, we met today. And we will have four policies for first reading at our next meeting, and one policy for second reading. And I believe we're gonna try to get at least one of those policies up to you early, because it's lengthy. And so we'll get that up to you as soon as we can. Negotiations.
What's Kelly doing there?
Is that it?
Absolutely.
Okay, so just before this meeting, I found out that the Winthrop Education Association grabbed my hat. So now we will get a chance to read it and do that.
It's our intent to have it next meeting. There's still a few edits that need to be done, but it's a pretty good press work, and I personally want to thank Joe and Kelly, and the teachers. It was a, was a mostly fairly good process, I think.
Excellent job.
Yeah, I think, I think we, you know, we set forth this beginning to put an aggressive timeframe on it, and we didn't really investigate that.
You certainly did. Congratulations. Anything with the curriculum?
No.
And how about renovation, new construction?
No.
Okay. Moving on to the administrators' reports. Any questions, comments for anybody?
I did have a comment, I don't know, I was gonna save it till the end, but I'll do it now.
Okay, sure.
These were great, I just really wanna, what's, what's happening with the sixth grade remote students? It's so cool. They're working with the University of Maine and Slough Company to allow students to explore the universe. They've given the kids access to their telescopes and observatories in Chile and the Canary Islands to see objects in the universe that they would not be able to access. I just love how teachers are thinking outside of the box. It's amazing, and it's great to see that fifth grade and step up is happening, and eighth grade send off is happening. It sounds like they've got some really cool things planned. So thank you to everyone who's been doing that as well. But I just really do appreciate all of these, to know what's happening, and encourage people in the community to get online and read them as well, because they're very informative.
Anybody else? Any specific questions or comments? I wanted to highlight those as well, and then also, there was a book fair for the grade school. I read that as well. And whiteboards in three grade four classrooms, that sounded pretty exciting to me. I loved all the stuff about the testing, keeping us informed in that. And also the year end activities, having that all outlined here, and what will be streamed and when it's happening for the high school. I did have one question about the NBC Scholars banquet. Can you explain exactly what that is, and was it NBC-wide, or do we have any, any students that attended that? How does that work?
So we did, it was virtual, actually.
Yeah?
We met in the pack. The parents was the first time in over a year that we actually had parents in the building to see their children being recognized. And it was our top 10 who were recognized by the administration at the high school with a Mountain Valley Conference Certificate of Achievement.
That's fantastic. So they were the, not only are they good athletes, they're good scholars?
Yes.
Awesome, that's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would the events be streamed, are those YouTube, or Facebook Live, or NFHS? And, oh, yeah.
And the answer to that piece, it will not be NFHS. They were looking to actually charge, as they did during the sports season. So, is exactly how we're going to be able to do that?
Awesome.
I would look at Ms. Shaw to help us make that happen.
Nice, okay, thanks.
We will make sure as soon form as possible, as soon as we know how we're going to make that happen.
Perfect, thank you.
And I just wanted to recognize the 93 high school students who participated in the day of airing. I know I saw some down at Norcross Point, and I love the pictures, thank you for including those. It's just a wonderful thing, just the list of all the different things they were doing. I, I'm with Jana, I just so appreciate these reports that you guys give us. Oh, and I had one question about the CUSP program. Are you anticipating that, will that be an ongoing thing for, for the kids that might need to get ramped back up after remote learning or COVID-related issues? Or do you think that after this program this summer, they'll, they'll kind of meet your goals there?
I think that's gonna have to kind of be delineated as we see how, how it kind of progresses through the summer. I think that, you know, through the survey that the Back to School Committee has put up too, we're, we're seeing that teachers are concerned about their students getting what they need, and making sure that, you know, they're hitting some of those benchmarks that are really important moving forward. So I, I would anticipate, you know, additional student supports, I know with some of our extra funding, we've kind of been thinking about what type of staffing and programming we can provide district-wide. And CUSP, extending it into further years may be part of that puzzle piece. But I think it's gonna depend a lot on what our students need also next year, when they come in front of us again, as we do have so many remote students returning. So I don't think it will be CUSP necessarily during the school year. But starting to look at and identify student supports that we need, social, emotional, and academic, is a priority that the A-Team has talked about, Mr. Hodgkin has talked about, and we're looking at using some of our funding to support that.
So I think, I've just added, it wasn't my report, obviously, but my sense is that, I don't know, I think Megan's answer is correct. I don't know what it will look like, I think we, we are pretty certain that we've already identified some students who will be in the program this summer. Hopefully next year we return to a more normal five-day-a-week situation. I personally would like to see us look at some sort of summer school option. And, but I think we, we need, we need to have some conversations as a school committee around that, because what I don't ever want to see happen here in Winthrop is that people sort of take the whole year off and then think they can just go to three weeks or four weeks of summer school. I think there needs to be some guidance, we need to develop some guidelines. But I strongly feel that we, we should have some sort of program like that for, for people who are, you know, we want to make sure our jo- our job, we send them from one grade to the next, or from, or one grade level to the next at the high schools, needs to be that we have to have evidence that they know and can do. It's not about seat time per se, but it is really about whether or not they, they give us enough evidence to show that they have grown. If they don't, if they just don't do any work, and then they think they're gonna show up for three, four weeks of summer, and that's gonna make up the whole year, that's not acceptable, and hopefully, it's not acceptable to anybody.
So now we have Mr. Campbell, who will go over end of year activities at the high school.
So, we're calling after you've been presented, I already hit this type of doc, so, okay. I would ask the three questions that you may have. I really see only one change based upon the new guidelines that we received over the last couple of weeks. Originally, we were excited, possibly of being able to fill that gym for graduation. And once you receive the email from DOB, you didn't even look at, I mean, on the front page, it said, you know, all requirements for spacing were gone, but then when you dug in, we still got to remind more spacing, so...
Says it doesn't apply to schools, right now.
So, looks like graduation's still gonna be in the gym, but we're gonna have to put families in pause. And I believe distance is now down to three feet, so we're looking to add more per family. We will still screen things out, so folks who cannot be there will be able to watch it. Class night is our significant change, originally, there's gonna be students and administration. We are now going to allow the parents, just parents, to come in and sit in the pack. We can still be safe, given distance apart, and be able to do that so that they can actually witness their children receiving scholarships or seats, I keep calling them children. They're not children, how you draw.
They'll always be somebody's child.
And then you are gonna have an end of year assembly for kind of classroom, and that will be the Thursday before we get out. And it will be, again, just students, because the limitation of being able to get everybody in the gym, really not having room for parents.
Mark, with a little bit of softening of the expectations, obviously, I will need the graduation and this fact that Miss Dallas will be there. Are the other school committee members able to be there as well, if they choose to be?
They would like to be here, I would need to know, yes. I mean, we, because we know they have to be six feet apart.
Right.
We certainly could put more on stage.
How about Josh, is Josh gonna be there?
I'd stop there, actually.
I mean, Chuck is great.
Phenomenal.
Well, I'll be there with my brothers, so...
There you go. Okay, awesome. Yeah, just be nice, it's, you know, it's sort of a, I, I love where this is going, in terms of the whole trending of, of, you know, more allowable things. We just have to be careful, so, appreciate that.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So there is no old business tonight, and I just wanted to send out one more reminder for anybody who might want to do a comment. No one? No, okay. That after we do new business, that will be the time to call a comment. So, moving on to new business, I'll undertake a motion to nominate Caitlin Kavanaugh as kindergarten teacher. So who?
Seconded.
Seconded, any discussion?
I'd just like to see Katie joining us. She goes by Katie, she's coming from Bowdenham Community School, she has one year experience as a first grade teacher. And when she filled out the application and her interest in us, she stated how she wants to help the younger ones to form their own opinions and learn how to navigate the world. And then when asking her about Winthrop, it was the core values. She had done her research and done her homework on us, because she asked us all these questions in the interviews, so, so interested in our community. She was here this morning, and so excited to be here. I did introduce her to a few people, and I said, "Well, it'll be official tonight, once, you know, they decide to nominate her or whatever." But she is young, passionate, eager, and we're just thrilled to have her be a part of our kindergarten team. So with your nomination, that will happen for us, but yeah, she's very excited to come to our school.
So I want to add also, it's always enjoyable for me to get to check references and stuff, or to have conversation, I didn't check references, but they did that. I talk to, I talk to the candidates, and get to know a little bit about them. As I sort of explained, it's not really an interview with me, really it's about, let me share this with you about our, our school, and what do you need to know in order to make your, you know, your decision. But what's very cool for me, it may not be as meaningful for some of you, but she is, she graduated from Callas High School. So she's on a little, she was on a little tiny school, which, what I know of Callas from my two years that I was at Fulton, is that it's very, very much like Winthrop in terms of family piece. So, I think that was also one of the things, that's part of why she shared with me, that it reminded her so much of where she's from, how she grew up, and this whole sense of being in a close-knit, very caring community is something that she really wanted to do, so, I was very present.
She mentioned that with us also, so yeah. And, and when I called, I, I was at Bowdenham Community School before coming here to Winthrop. And so when I called and talked to Mr. Leger, Chris Leger is the first one here, and he's a wonderful administrator, and he told me, he said, "Joan, if I had a place, you wouldn't be getting her." He said, "If I had a spot for her, she would not be wanting to use it." So, yeah, we're really pleased to have her come join us here.
Thank you so much for sharing that with us. Any other questions or discussion? All right, I will call the vote, all those in favor? The vote passes unanimously. Okay, next, school committee stipends.
So, I've been asked a couple times to take a look at where the school committee stipends, and what the process is for considering changing them. And I may just say, all three of these next items are, are, none of them are, are there for action tonight, these are all about conversation and just getting some sense of feelings or whatever about how people are feeling about these issues. My sense is that, well, I sent you the information that's in your packet about the process. The town, the town council does have the authority to set the stipends for the school committees, so if you want them to change, at some point, we need to consider what that, what the change should be. If we could agree upon that, then we would, then I would add it as a, make it as a motion for a future meeting. If you don't think it should change, then we probably need to have the conversation longer, because it definitely needs to change. So, Jana?
Do we, does the money that the school committee gets paid come out of the school budget?
Yes.
So we're essentially paying ourselves out of the school, right, out of the school, but it doesn't come out of the town?
Correct. But in a lot of single municipalities, those types of decisions are, are in the hands of the town charter, which is in the hands of the town council.
So can I make a, well, I know we're not doing a motion, but can I make a proposal?
Yeah, you can, yeah, and that's what I want us to do, make, make a proposal, we're not voting on it tonight, because we hadn't said we would, and, yeah.
So, I just sort of did, I don't know, added some things up. We have approximately 24 meetings a year, if we do two every month for school committee. On top of that, we have several chairs, several committees that meet at least once a month, let's, let's just say another 12 meetings, so that's around 36 meetings. The way that the town gets paid for town council is $20 a meeting at a max of $7.50. I would like to propose that we get 25 a meeting with a max of 1,000. That would be approximately 40 meetings a year.
So, as I calc, this is, this is, just to say, no kidding. As I calculated, the amount of money you make now in the meetings that you have, you don't make minimum wage. I think if one of you wanted to be...
No, I'm not saying, I just, yeah.
I think if you wanted to be a peanut butter, you can say, you're not meeting the law. And it, and it is hard to calculate that, so I, I like that, whether I like those numbers or not, I like that approach. Other places where then they have just a much, a much larger stipend, and it includes everything you do. So, you know, what's, what, my downside of that type of proposal, and I'm not opposed to this, I'm just throwing things out there, is that it sort of makes it, sort of makes it up to individual people to, like, you're only five of you, so you're pretty much all doing all the work.
Right.
And, and then it sort of becomes a question of, what do you count, what counts as a meeting? I mean, we do a, in the short time I've been here with Ginny and Krista, we are, I did, I did meetings every two weeks with them to get ready for the meeting. I do it now with Jana and Sue. Do those count as the me, I don't really, I don't know that answer. In other places where I've been, they did not. But, and, and here's another example, tonight, we had a policy committee meeting before this meeting, is that, is that two meetings, is that one meeting? You know, the, the finance committee meets whole separately, and it does the warrant, does that, does that count? I, I don't know, I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just saying it's, it's a little more complicated to do that, so...
And so if that, if that were the case, because I was just, I was looking, because it does not define even what we get paid in the town charter at all. It just says that this school committee is in charge of voting to give us a raise, or however it's worth. So we could, we could just go with like, even just like $1,000 a year, again, I'm just throwing out a number. But if you were to work that out, it would be about $25 to $30 a meeting.
Yep.
With 30 to 40, so...
What is then your experience at other, in other school districts, how they do it?
They do it by meeting, and they, I'm sorry, they don't do, they do it by meeting, but it's, it's all the, it's all the count is the actual school committee meeting, it's not, not, whatever. And then I've been at other places, through, in fact, what Jana just said, AKA, this is the stipend you get. And nobody gets on the school committee to get richer. So it isn't like, if you say it's, you know... So it isn't like, if you say it's, you know, X amount of stipend for the entire year and, you know, Sue only shows up for one of those meetings, she still gets the money. But that's, and that becomes, that can, that has potential to be problematic, but what are the, I mean, realistically, look around you, what are the chances that would happen? Not at all. So I like that. My other experiences, and it's different times now, 1,000 is a lot. But it's not really. Not in this time, not in this day and age, so I, I don't know what the right number is. I have to go with whatever you would likely to... Well, I think the pro- the process is this. You pick a number, you pick a process, whatever you want it to do. You vote on it, then I take it to the town council. I can tell you the budget will absorb it, even at $1,000.
It's five, it's almost 5,000.
Sorry, Josh. Well, it would, Josh, if you'd graduate.
I'm dying of laughter, actually.
Yes.
Do you know what other school boards or school committees program here do?
It's a, it's a combination. I mean, I, I, you probably looked at what RSU 12 does. Nope.
No, I have no idea. I just, just like-
Yeah.
I can find out what we do, but I don't know how we get paid over there.
I'm certainly happy to do that research. I wanted to, before I, I spent a lot of time and energy on this, I want to get a sense of, you know, I didn't imagine that anybody would say, "No, we're good. I don't need the money. I'm going to donate it and now whatever." Josh?
Just to be difficult, how would that work on like, so like this, I guess, school year, we have two school committee members leave. Then we have two come on. Do they look at the same money for those?
No, they get prorated. That's a great question. They would, they, in other places where I've been, they get prorated. But first of all, and, and I don't, I'm not looking at changes, so don't get me wrong. This is the first place I've, let's see, in RSU 4, they change board members three times a year. Is, because it's three towns. So they, one town changes in March when they have their old-fashioned town meeting. And they get elected and they stop, boom. The other ones do their elections in, in June, are coordinated with the state election. They get elected, they get on, boom. And other, and other places do no government like we do here, and then they start. But they start immediately. We don't start here until January, so. But in all those cases, the answer to your question is prorated.
Well, yeah.
So if, for instance, they did 50% of meetings, they get 50% of the stipend. If they did 60% of the meetings, they do 60% of the stipend.
Joe?
One of the things that we did at one of the main school management meetings, one time was have a meeting with Ken and accounting group, which they would do every time they have it, just simply because it'd be a lot of good information. This was a number of years ago. But they talked about the unexpected expenses of being on the school committee or any committee in that respect. And Tim may relate to this, or Molly may relate to this too right now, but it's little things like, number one, you've got to have technology access. In some cases, that meant that people had to go out and purchase their own computers. Or they had to learn what the laptops were in the schools and take one of those types of things. There were things like cost of having a printer. Because in some of these districts, they're more spread out than we are. You can't just go downtown and pick up a copy of it. But even in that respect, some of us prefer reading from a printed thing versus off the screen, so that you print everything we send out. You know, you've gone through a couple of cartridges to, to, to print this type of thing. And then they talked about little things affecting their lives, like unexpected meetings, or even if they were expected meetings and their spouses at home, they have a copy of it. That's an expense. What I'm getting at is just the whole nature of a position. And we've never really explained it well to the newcomers because we don't lose them. And I really mean that sincerely because we've had similar, a lot of similar discussions like this before. But one of the more intriguing things has been that when we were in a tremendous financial situation, a crisis situation, and some of this started way back 15 years or so ago, when I was on the school tour, was trying to cut the legal bill. And there are various ways you can cut the legal bill, but not following it. But we had a history of needing them almost on a daily basis, and so if you look at that section, you'd see that there's a lot of money in that particular budgetary item, okay? And much of that was devoted to legal things. For instance, for years, $20 and $40,000 was put into it for negotiations. And one of the first things that Superintendent Brown got into was to say to us, "I think you could negotiate without lawyers." Now, I would give her credit for that, except that even before she arrived, we used to pay the negotiators a separate stipend. And this was a relatively, quite easy discussion of negotiations, but some of our negotiations, you know, gone on for more than a year type of thing with, with many more meetings. And I certainly voted every town to pay the stipend, although ironically, I never received one. It seemed like I wasn't negotiating. When I negotiated, they took it away, which they did. In that particular case, that was one of the first things that Superintendent Brown looked at me and Krista and said, "Do you need the money?" And we both said, "No, that's a mistake."
I tell you that, I've never seen that.
But, but, but the point was is that we saved, we know, in the last two years, over $30,000 each of those two years with Superintendent Brown by not losing the office. And, and I'm glad we did that. We needed that type of thing. I don't think that, I think in the case, and I don't have to negotiate ever again, okay, but I think we should always pay the negotiators if we're doing it with a lot of legal assistance. There's a lot to it. And we've been fortunate, and there's a lot of pressure on the superintendent to take and have the knowledge that we need to back us up type of things. We don't want to make this step. Both the last time and this one, too. So those are just some other things beyond just the idea of the meeting, is really what I was giving that money with it. Because there are other meetings, for instance, if you're on the committee to go to CATS. That's not just being on the committee. I mean, we've always had a thing, if you're on the committee, you actually do something. And it's part of your role as being a member of this school, too. So I think that the job itself has become much more involved, important. There's much more facets to it than speak well to the fact that now is the time that we should take and provide some compensation which is above the minimum wage or the minimum expenses that need school that are employed members, you know, actually get certain. And I'm just proud of all the different things they're into. And Tim, when you talked about working with the trails and things like, like that, around town and everything. I know that that's the future. Those, those things are so important to this community, as well as to our, to our students, too.
So it, it sounds like you want to move forward with this in a more formal way.
So I'd like to just say, respond real quickly to Joe's, like, I agree with everything he said, but I think that's why in other places where I've been, they did not look at breaking it out by various committees, but by making it a large enough stipend to make it worthwhile. I think you're right. I think there, you know, there are negotiations for the past four-plus months, closer to five months, it's been pretty intense. Before that, we did nothing. Finance does it every two weeks or so. And, you know, so their, their policy is, is it going to be every two weeks, but we do it just before. So I mean, they all have sort of their, it's hard to sort of say this one is more time-consuming, more involved than the others, so. I think if we can, if we can pick a number that you want us to vote on next time and to take to the town council, that would be, I think, the right thing to do. And quite frankly, since I'm sitting here with numbers in my head, I wasn't falling asleep on anybody, but I think 1,000 probably is the right number. All right, that's what I would draw up would be my suggestion.
Are we all in consensus that we want to put that on the agenda for next time to, to vote on formally?
Sure.
And that, at that amount, or sure?
Well, I think you also should consider the role of the chair and any vice chair is the additional duties. I guess you take those boys, because I'm simply, because the additional duties and responsibility, I I would suggest that we would even increase that number to reflect the important dues that the chair has for their tenure, but also.
I would have either agreed to that also, Joe, or even just to, again, what defines a meeting? Because with your chair and vice chair, they are going to be meeting more, so that stipend would be increased, although if you do, it's still capital of 1,000. You know, maybe you might increase chair, and again, just throwing this out there, chair and vice chair, a $30 a meeting or something different, so that they, it would really would still depend on how many meetings they go to.
I would say the easiest, quickest way to do that is to say, I mean, again, you can look at an hour, that becomes a bookkeeping and the butter. I think if we just said, and I'm glad you said that joke, and I forgot, that in other places where I've been, the chair and the vice chair were both additional stipend. Increase their stipend was different, and, so if I, if we're thinking about 1,000 for all board members, it probably should be like 1,500 for the chair, vice chair. If you mind my recommendation.
And just do like a flat stipend for that, not, not the meeting?
Yeah.
Yep.
But does, could, can, we guys will use, could, can't just be like a salary? Do we have to break it down by meeting or just like a teacher salary or this is, or a quotient stipend?
Exactly.
And going, if we have one less meeting, does that matter?
Yeah, what I'm, I guess what I'm suggesting is that we, that we don't vote by the meeting. We, we, that's the case. But Jana's share is sort of the, the justification for the number. And, and, you know, I could see me going to the town council and say, "If you go with this amount for the non-chair, vice-chair people, it's going to be, you know, we have a vote, you know, 30, say 40 meetings a year. This is what it equates to from a, you know, from a meeting standpoint." And again, it's, it varies. There are some times, you know, earlier this year, those who, we had a meeting that went till 10:30, 11:12.
Uh-huh, yeah.
That's pretty unusual. It's very unusual. And, and as I said, we, you know, Jana and Sue and I were talking earlier, but, you know, we, we, there, there have been times in the past when the school committee hasn't met. I don't know what that will look like in the future, but for me personally, I like two meetings a month. It would be nice if our meetings were basically hour and a half to two hours at the most. You know, I, I don't want to bore you with research, but there's sort of the sense of paying attention to after two hours, particularly after you've all worked a whole day is, is, is pretty strong, that that's not a great way to do business. So if we have three or four hours of meetings a month, then that means that's two meetings and I think that's, that's best. So I would just use it as justification, but you just said to me, this is exactly what I'm talking about. That the stipends for the, for the non-chair, vice-chair would be $1,000 for the year. And for the chair and vice-chair would be 1,500. That's what I would suggest. Except Joe, who doesn't, so he doesn't want any money here, and say that everyone else.
Place the money, I don't know.
No. Yeah, there you go. So I'm going to draw, I'm going to, that's the framework I'm going to use to draft a motion for next meeting.
Go ahead.
Good. I'll have a conversation with Dr. Y, with Jeff Cogbrook as well.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, next will be facilities director's stipend.
Well, I don't know why I put the word stipend in here. I really want us to consider, well, let me back up. So one of the things you asked me to do, and we'll talk more about it and do my evaluation tonight, is to take a look at, at sort of the big picture and where we need to go in the district. And I know when when Jenny was here, you talked a lot about, you know, this, this position wears many hats, and I knew that going into the position. I'm not, that's not the issue. But it really is about being proficient in the best use of, of people. And so I really think, as I've looked around and seen the jobs that people have done here, I think we, we have a ways to go. I think there are things we need to do. And I'm, I'm cognizant of the fact that people are not all that excited about adding a lot of administration here with them. But as I've looked at the way that the jobs have been done, I think, I think we should, need to give some strong consideration to adding the position of facilities director to the role here. And the reason for that is really simple in my mind. We have, I asked, I didn't provide you with the documentation today. If you look at what our, the valuation of our, of our schools and our fields and our, and our van, every, our property that we own, it easily exceeds $60 million. It's probably, I didn't add it all up, it's probably closer to 70, which is pretty good, Joe, that's what you're not going to spend it at. It just seems crazy to me that we don't think that it's worth investing some money to make sure that the upkeep and care and, and overview of that stuff is not managed in, in some sort of way. And then I take a look at what's happening with respect to the roles that people are doing. And this is not a discussion about any person in particular, but it looks at, I look at what people are doing, and I think in this community, you have to be kind of creative. I take a look at the role that the athletic director is doing here. I look at compensation for the athletic director here. I look at the hours and the time, and what's not part of the job description that, that's happening or being covered by that person. And it's, it just says to me, this is probably not the best, well, I can't say it's not the best use. It's, it's asking too much of any one position. So just to kind of think about other models, other places I've been, initially I started with the notion of, why don't we possibly compensate somebody for doing, give them a stipend for being responsible, and I said, "That's not a good way to go either." Because I think that still then splits their, you know, anybody's loyalty. So the more I thought about it and looked at other places I've been, for instance, in RSU 4, we created the position of athletic director, adult ed director. As far as I know, the only combination of such in the entire state, probably the entire world. But it worked. Just made sense based upon what was going on. The, so I just, the more I thought about it and had conversations with various people and thinking, we, I think we need to have somebody other than me who's responsible for the facilities coordination. And I'm really thinking about this because if you read my, my self-evaluation, one of the things we're going to be looking at, I hope, is the process of developing a comprehensive plan. I can't imagine any school system putting together a comprehensive plan without a fairly significant piece of that being around facilities, you know, maintenance and issues with, with upkeep and, and those types of things. And so it just makes sense that we, we designate somebody to do that. So instead of, at first I was thinking we just have a stipend and then we add it to, to somebody who's already kind of doing it now. I said, "That's not, that's probably not a great plan." Because I don't think we should have a person who does, essentially wears three major hats. Two major hats, that's pretty doable. So I got thinking about what's the best way to do that. So my, so more in line with this plan, in my thinking, is that we, we create a position of athletic director, facilities director for the entire K through 12, again, in keeping with my notion of that we should look at things systemically, not as building by building by building. And I, I have not officially begun the process of creating a job description for this because if the committee has no interest in moving in this direction, then I'm not going to invest the time creating a job description. I think it, it's pretty clear in my mind. So then I think it leaves the vexing question, and I think we're in a perfect position right now to make this kind of shift. That we have, we have a full-time building principal at the high school and at the middle school. And if we then also, along with this, this shift, consider a, paying a stipend to a teacher in each of those buildings to be essentially the dean of students. They would still teach and, and basically be responsible for assisting the administrator in doing that. And at the same time, we already have sort of a Plan B, C, whichever way you want to do that. Because at the middle school right now, Megan's house there, and, and I don't know how many times this year, but there's been a number of times that Megan has assisted or taken over the, the role of building administrator because that needed to happen. I would see the facilities person, athletic director, if we, if we go in that direction, doing the exact same thing at the high school and/or the middle school. But they would, they would be the third line of defense as opposed to- But they would, they would be the third line of defense as opposed to the first line, you know, well, the first line is obviously the principal. But if you then have a dean of students and a plan for a lot, giving that person some time in the office and freeing that person up if they need to be freed up during their non-teach, or during their teaching time, then that becomes the next line of sort of defense and dealing with situations. So to me, it seems like the most cost-effective way to move the district forward from an administrative oversight position and put us in the best position to address these issues moving forward. So that's my thought.
Your three hands. I'm just wondering, what are the job duties right now, dean of students wise?
So Mark could probably tell you more, but here, this is what I'm saying. Presently, the dean of students is doing the dean of students, and he's splitting his time, person currently in the position is splitting his time between the middle school, high school, primarily at the high school, which is where his primary office is, and is also the athletic director, you know, and, and, but here's the other part that I think most people don't know, and it's really important, is I don't know how much time he's already spending doing facilities maintenance issues, addressing those things, being there for custodians and parent parents in middle school and high school. But he's also doing it at the grade school as necessary, so it's a pretty spread thin.
But what are the dean of students' job activities, not facilities, not?
Yep, they are essentially to assist, they're very much like the, like you would think of an assistant principal, that they assist the building leaders in dealing with student and faculty issue, staff issues as they arise. In some cases, I don't know that our current dean does anything with evaluations, but sits in on meetings and takes notes of that recently, and, you know, just helps manage the day-to-day operations of the building with or without the principal there.
And is there not a vice-principal at the middle school?
There's not.
A fourth vice, so it's just that one person filling those two roles already, plus, plus?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. What would be the overall effect on the budget?
So because they do have an association, we would have to negotiate that. The, the school committee has the authority to create the position, and then we have a duty to negotiate it. So my guess would be that it would be somewhere between, probably somewhere around $20,000.
With the stipends for the teachers in the middle school?
Yeah, everything, yep, everything.
Including making athletic and facilities work?
Yep, and why I say it's a good time to do this right now is we are including in the ESR funds for additional teaching support, so that may make it easier for us to, at least for the next two years, figure out how to provide the necessary coverage within the building to pay a stipend and maybe give a period, that's what it works a lot of other buildings, they get a stipend, and then they would ultimately have, like, have one less teaching load. So over the next few years, when we have additional teachers, then that'll be fairly easy for us to cover. I think it gives us a good opportunity to see if the model works, I'm very confident it will work. And then a couple of years from now, when we are, we're going to be looking at not having COVID funds to cover that money, we say, does it make sense, is it working for us, is it giving us the results we want?
Jan?
This came up sort of additionally too, Sue and I were talking, and Joel was, after one of the baseball games, was having to drag the field. And so not only has he been in school all day, been at baseball and softball all afternoon, but at 6:30, he then still had to drag the field. So we actually were, or Sue sort of came up with the idea of looking at even possibly hiring out for field maintenance during the different seasons, while we just be the spring and fall. And then Jim actually said, well, when you say that, and sort of looked at this proposal, and if that were more the same position, whoever it is in, whoever's in that position, you know, at least they might be able to do some of that during the day, rather than doing it at night. They might be able to come in the morning, or whatever, maybe not, I don't know.
No, no, that's, yes.
But, you know, things like that could get done on a more timely basis, and they'd actually be paid for it. I mean, I can't imagine he's getting paid from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Maybe, what I was going to add to that, because everything you said, I totally agree with, but I think the situation that we don't realize is, in combining the Athletic Director and the Dean of Students, is, and I think we have a person doing the job right now who's very conscientious, so I know Mark is really good at doing this, I'm really good at doing this, I will say to our, our current Athletic Director and Dean, you know, if you have a late night, if you're out, come in later in the morning. And he does it, how often, Mark, how very, but he generally does it. But if he were, it's the position where Facilities Director and Athletic Director, the fact that he may or may not be there until 10:30, 11 o'clock the next day, and now is working at, you know, 11:30, 12 o'clock till 9:00, that's, that's a reasonable day. So it's a, it's a lot of time. And I have to just say, and I, I know there's a lot of story, history behind this, so we don't need to get into it. The, when I did some comparison of similar positions in the area, we are, we are woefully behind, woefully behind, so.
And Facilities Director would oversee the maintenance?
Oversesee the maintenance, oversee any maintenance.
Staff.
Yep, and the maintenance staff. And one of the things that was an issue when I first came here, I heard from the administrators a lot, was there was some concern about FMS, which, I have to be honest, I've heard a bunch complaining about it this year. I had a meeting with the, with Patrick Dillon there, the person who's in charge, and I just said, we want to keep working with you, but in order to do that, you know, I can't have people complaining about your work. And if we had a Facilities Director, Facilities Director would be a person who could also come in. He isn't in charge of FMS, he certainly is in charge of making sure that the, the work is being done to the level we expect it to be done.
Any other questions or discussion? So do we want to pass, Jim, or the job description?
What I'd like to ask you to do is to, it'll be two motions, a job description and then the approval of the position.
Yeah.
Because we can't negotiate the position until we have it.
But even then, would you do, approve the job description? I would like to see the job description, because the position, we might have another idea, which you'd have to. Just really, you could suffice by just creating a draft or a job or a position.
Well, the reality could be this, and I think I know where you're going with that, Joe, that you could do a job description discussion and whatever, and you could vote if you don't want it, whatever. We could put it on as a motion to vote, and if you choose to table, you can.
Yeah.
We have that on the second, and then we have a meeting on the 16th. So if you want to meet on the second and review the job description, possibly vote on the job description. And then if you don't vote it on the second, you can vote on the 16th, and we can vote on a person to do that at that time.
Is that, if the person, how does that work? Because we have a person that's in, or in part of that position.
Right.
If they were to not accept that, would they then take a cut, like, I mean, or not, like?
Well, we have to follow, we have to follow the collective bargaining agreement, because some of the, part of that is defined in there. That's also one of the things I want to talk to, to, particularly with Kelly and Joe about is, I think we need to, we've had a request from the administrative group, and they would like to negotiate a couple pieces. They would add a couple members to it, at least, I think. They want to discuss some of the other things that are in there personally. I think that we, I would like to see us, I'd like to see us have to an agreement with them to consider a different process. I do not like the way that the contract is structured right now for salaries, deciding these things, you know, it's, it's a little convoluted in my mind, more complicated than it needs to be. So that's a bad answer to your question, Jan, it really is about, if, unless something different happens, we negotiate something different, then we would have to probably look to post positions, we'd have to make a determination in the school committee about how much of it is this, how much of it is that, then we have to negotiate, if they, the administrative hypothetically don't want to negotiate where it fits into their present tier system, then we have to negotiate where it fits in the tier, and then we have to decide, we have to post internally to see if. I actually, I mean, those are great questions, I don't, it's a little further ahead than my thinking has been so far, because as you know, Jolene is sitting here as the principal of grade school next year, because my sense is, once you become an administrator, that's all one bargain, even if we can, we can put people, we can move people around as we want to, as long as they're willing.
Yeah.
We didn't make Jolene be principal because we didn't say you have to be.
Right. I just don't want, I mean, I wish she could go along.
I think she could do it.
So is your concern that the person that's, what happens if the person that's in there doesn't accept it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you've now split that position, well, no, you haven't, you've really taken that position out, because there really is no more dean of students slash AD.
Right.
And if they didn't want the dean of students slash facilities, and whatever, I mean, would that maybe, could we make it so if it gets approved, it wouldn't be approved until the following school year? Is that what it came, I mean, you already made like a contact?
The best case scenario is we make it effective July 1st, but I don't know when to get the agreement done by then.
That would be, I mean, it would be nice if we could do that, so that if that person weren't, it would give them an out and us an out and in.
Yep. We have to review that contract too.
I'd like to see that contract.
Yeah, there's a, you know, the requirement of posting internally something of non-candidate candidates, we think, we just have to be careful about that, I mean, I'd like to see it resolved before July 1st.
That'd be great, I think, I think there's a lot of willingness to do that, I think there's interest. It's been part of, you know, a conversation about roles that people are playing right now, and, you know, the challenges of the positions that we're asking, what we're asking them to do. From my perspective as a superintendent, I feel more like we have a gigantic hole that perhaps your answer is, the school committee is, that's my job to fill out a hole, that's great. I think that's, you know, that's kind of what I heard from you, you know, it's like, you know what, I can't be, I just can't do, give a hundred percent of my attention, a hundred percent to places, when there's, you know, many, many places to go. I think you've seen, and I hate to keep embarrassing Megan and do this all the time, but I think you've seen, you know, I, our top writer is about educating students, and we hired a really dynamic director teaching and learning this year, and I think you have seen the benefits of that. So my sense is, we have, we have a gigantic hole with respect to facilities and maintenance, and I think we need to address it, and I think we have a pretty low-cost possibility of doing it, at least for the next two years, to give it a shot. But I, I'm pretty confident, I'm very confident, that if we do that, that you're going to see that's the best model, particularly when we start talking about doing a comprehensive plan and where that, where those pieces fit in.
Helen?
So I just have a couple of questions. The first is, if we agree to do this, and we say that we'll use teachers from the high school and the middle school as the dean of students, will they be nominated to the committee? And we would decide if that was a good thing, or is that something you would do on your own, or would they apply for it?
Yes, so that, that part is actually fairly clear, that they would fall, I see them falling under the teacher contract, and so the process of filling those would be, you would post internally, anybody could do it. I guess hypothetically, a middle school teacher could apply for the high school stipend if they wanted to, I don't see that being feasible, but that's what you do, you post internally for internal candidates and fill it that way. It would make no sense for this position to be filled by an outside candidate for, for that type of stuff. And because, to me, the compensation would be a stipend and a one less teaching period.
And would you look to have that filled by July 1st as well?
That wouldn't be quite as necessary, but I think you need to, you need to make sure that you have people who are interested. So I think if you move in that direction, then we can post that and find out, you know, we will find what we're interested in. I have, again, I have a sense, people talk a lot, I think there's, I think there's some reliable candidates in both of those, who let our interests.
So that answer now makes me have a great question, first of all. So in the recent negotiations that we did with the teachers, one of the caveats that we have is regarding loss of time to plan. So would this be that we would carve out specific time for dean of student activities, and then another teacher wouldn't be impacted by that?
Correct.
Okay, all right, great. And then my next question is, the person who's currently in the dean of students slash AD position, have you spoken with them, do they, have they insinuated to you that they would be favorable for this change?
Absolutely, and again, it's not the only area that I've had to look at, but I think, as I've watched and got to know this person this year, you know, I, and I'm very familiar with that role, having done it myself in the past, you know, I just, we, we, it, it, there's been a lot, a longstanding concern about the expectations of that job, and some concerns about how we might be able to do it differently to make it more manageable and allow, I think the person in the job, I think, has done a great job. I think it's come under some scrutiny that I think is unfair because of the advance of the job.
I think, you know, the dean of students is a kind of behind-the-scenes position, so it's hard to evaluate that.
Yep.
But they seem to be very passionate about the AD portion of their job, and I see them really taking this new role and running and making it a really great role. But I didn't know if that was something where they would say, no, thank you.
Yeah, interestingly, you've all witnessed this year, as we've gone through the issues of dealing with COVID and scheduling and the inconsistencies with athletics versus what we do in school, you can see how much that has formed Joel, because he does wear both those hats with a great deal of passion. So from his perspective, as a, as a dean of students, some of the things that we allow the athletes to do seems, seems woefully unfair. And then as the Athletic Director, he gets a lot of pressure from the community, and primarily from the community about, you know, wanting to make exceptions and do those types of things, it's really hard. So I'm not sure that necessarily, that would be my reason for looking to separate those positions, but it is a reality of, and that sort of began the whole conversation about, it's hard to wear those two hats sometimes with those, with those expectations, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly, that was very helpful.
Any other questions?
As I was just commenting, I think it makes perfect sense for such a little money, it would be very efficient.
Yeah.
Makes perfect sense.
So I think that we would like to move forward with the job description?
I'll, I'll do the job description, I'll get it up to you as soon as I can. We'll have it on, on the June 2nd meeting, and we may or may not, we, I'll send you to the copy of the CBA.
Thank you.
And we'll see, we'll get it June 2nd, see where we, where we go. What I may do, just for, again, for public, for public purposes, I may put both motions on the agenda, because it may be possible you're voting on it, and then if we're not ready to vote on it, we just postpone it until the next meeting. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then next we have a discussion regarding retirements.
So I know that, actually, Colleen and I have been talking about this, the, we have five people who are retiring this year, and I think the school committee has done, done something in the past. We have, we are doing, trying to, again, moving towards this whole sense of we're one system. We are taking the first baby step towards, towards that by, I believe it's June 9th, it's a Wednesday, looking to do a district-wide or system-wide open house, that'll be at the Sarah, Sarah?
Forest.
Yeah, yeah, in a Bruce, it's a big space, they're not typically open on a Wednesday, Sarah said we can. Sarah said we can, we can do that, at least we're in the process of negotiating. It looks like she's leaning towards that. We have, we have to work some details off. What we're tentatively thinking is four to seven on that Wednesday. We are in the process of buying something that I hope will be the beginning. Something we talked about with administrative team, something for all of the retirees to give them all every year. And, and I know a lot of the schools are planning individual things for their staff and that's fine. I'm not sure that will ever go away, particularly if people that have got over the amount of time that, you know, that have been in there. But I just thought I should put it on here because I don't know, Colleen had said to me in the past, you have asked the retirees to come to a meeting so you can recognize them publicly and that's, I have no problem with that. I could tell you that at least Mr. Ladd is, is probably not going to attend to be very clear about that. And, you know, I don't, I don't know what you want to do, but I thought I'd.
Leave that.
Kid down. I'll leave that up to Jolene. She's probably the only one that can run it down. I know, I know.
Yes, can't do it.
Yeah. I did, I saw him today very, very briefly in the hall. He just said to me, he's been very clear about what is, what he's, what he'd like to see happen. And he's struggling. I think we need to honor that and not expect that he will, you know, we should invite him to anything that we choose to do. But don't expect that he'll be here and don't be offended by it. It's, it's not being done out of an intentional slight, you know, so. But I think the other four people, you know, Ms. Chris on the other end, is she on the Zoom? She's not on the Zoom. That's hilarious because when we're having the same conversation, she's like talking about, you know, multiple big parties and celebration and whatever. But, you know, they're just totally different people. So Lita Blanchard, Kathy, Gillis Sultan, and who am I missing? Oh, Liz. Yeah. Yeah, they're, you know, so I, I think whatever you want to do, what do you want to do as a school committee, certainly you'd be, you'd be invited, welcome to come to that thing on the 9th. If you want to do separate, something separate than that, I think we just need, I need to know that so we can get it going now.
I personally like the idea of going to Vander Bruce and it sounds like maybe what you would have planned for anybody retiring would be maybe a little more significant than a plaque.
We talked a little bit.
A little bit more useful.
I have to share it because I think it's funny. Colleen and I were having a little spat in the office about this whole thing and we brought it up at the administrative team meeting as well. But she was like, we should give them a plaque. And really, you know, the other guy said, I can promise you this, when I retire, I'm not hanging plaques up in my house. I have plaques and I can be around. So something that would be a little more, I don't know, decorative, you know, so we sort of settled and I was looking at earlier. We were meeting, there's a couple of different things that we're looking to do. And I don't want to say what it is because I want to, I don't want to give it away right now. But it is something that will have the Rambo bus on it and some other stuff like that. So that's what we're kind of looking at.
We are going to invite the spouses and.
It'll be an open house for.
It's an open house for the whole community, so home students.
Anybody can come.
Yep.
Yeah.
And like I, I don't, I haven't seen this face myself and people have seen it and said it's excellent. And so.
I've never been there.
So the only thing, like I said, it's not, they, they typically have food, so we're going to have to, we talked today that we probably will, will, will do something, some sort of light snacks, probably work with our own food service program and do something like that to get some snacks. And when we get everybody that's, all of the retirees, they will probably get people's attention and then do the, do a very quick. In the, in the future, it would be nice if we did a little more formal, that want to just quickly go through is when I was in Rumford, we had a, we had a contract with Black Mountain and they allowed us to use their lodge. And if you do through that lodge, it's a spectacular lodge. And we, we did a dinner and people paid for it. It wasn't like we, we, it was we, we catered with a good food store in Bethel and they came in and we did the meal. We did, we had the same sort of thing, gifts that everybody got. Individual buildings did some stuff with their, with their staff and a little bit less and less. We can, the focus was on the system wide celebration. So I see that, I'd like to see that happen in the future.
Does anybody have any strong feelings against that?
So we won't do anything special here at committee level? Okay.
Good.
We're good with that. I think that's a good idea. That's the plan. Let's, yeah, I mean, Sarah seemed very, you know, very good with this today with our problem.
All right, so you'll just keep us posted on that?
Will do.
All right. Now it's time for public comments. None? All right, anybody here? All right, when you want to.
Nobody here can comment. They're all logged down. Tiff, Tiff, Tiff. Tiff, you want to talk?
She talks all day, right? Okay, school committee comments. Jana?
Uh, thank you to whoever it was at high school put out the senior lawn signs. I've seen some posts from them, so it's nice that they were able to continue that tradition that was started last year. And I just, good luck to seniors who last day is May 28th. And then all the, the fun activities get to begin. So that's it.
Okay, thank you, Toby.
Yeah, I just, I want to do two things. Um, one, um, I'm going to say her last name wrong and I apologize, but Allison Stanwoods.
Stanwoods.
Yes. Um, we were on a field trip on Tuesday. Uh, she was told on Sunday, because my son was on the bus, that was quarantine, the whole bus, that he's not going to be able to attend. And very short notice, she made the field trip for next week.
Wow.
Just a company of one student. And I thought that's, definitely should be praised.
Fantastic.
And number two is, again, really bad with names, Mrs. Bill, Bill, Connor.
Connor.
Oh, yeah.
I watched the, uh, the video, the, the music performance. Uh, and I did catch Clay Moon here right before, right at the, uh, last year, they did the performance for us. She's got a lot of talent and she's doing amazing things with the kids. Like I have, I don't quite see that level at the other schools like out of my way. Uh, so just, yeah, she's doing really good job this moment.
And if you guys, anybody hasn't gone on to see that, it's very, I taught, I made a point of seeing her today to say the exact same thing. Very impressive.
Thank you, Timothy. Kelly?
Yeah, Ms. Connor Fong's concert was one of the things I wanted to talk about as well. Not just that she put together a really nice concert, but how innovative she is with getting instruments for these kids, like boomsticks and recycling bins to make drums. I mean, that's awesome. I shared it with both, with both sets of grandparents so they could see it as well. It was just beautifully done, first of all. And then just, just the amount of thought that went into everything that she did was really neat to see. Because I don't know about your kids, but mine very rarely tell me anything about what happens at school, although they're teenagers. And the other thing that I wanted to say was just how impressed I am with the communication that's come home recently about the NUIA, the scheduling, the please leave all personal devices at home. And I was really impressed with the way that that came through this year.
Fantastic, thank you. Joe?
Well, first of all, could I get an update from Josh on how the tennis championships are going or they're all done? I have, I have no idea except I have written a name in the paper. I know you went through stiff competition.
Oh, yeah.
Emily's brother here, he also competed in, is it the Dooley? Her last name is Dooley?
Anna, yeah, Anna Dooley.
Anna, and so three good representatives.
Um, yeah, I was going to say that, a little bit of my committee. Um, yeah, so we have three seniors and they're moving on to the round of, it's, it's around sixty-four, but it's really around fifty-two because twelve players are seated for both boys and girls. So then it's a round of fifty-two and if you win that day, and it'll be on Friday. And so we each have our designated times that we're playing. If we win that, uh, our first match, then we move on to the round of thirty-two. And then if we win there, then we move on to the round of sixteen, uh, which is, it's just the competition just gets them there. Because it's actually like, this is actually like beyond the qualifiers. So this is the actual sixty-four players left for boys and girls. So that should be pretty fun, but we have some tough competition. You can kind of check it out. Like, I mean, um, yeah, after you go on from the round of fifty-two, you can see that, uh, who you're going to play next. So you can either play the winner of like one of the other matches or you're playing a seated player. Should have been really fun, but, um, it's been a lot of fun, but yeah, it's great to see.
And where are you playing?
Uh, Lewis and I.
And Lewis and Maxine?
Yeah, uh, no, this.
Oh, this room?
Yeah.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, well, that was the number one one. Uh, superintendent Campbell.
Superintendent Campbell.
Oh, you have the superintendent yet? Oh, I, I'm sorry. How do you play golf? Okay, that's the first question I have to do. I might need to do a pass.
I need to go in here.
You need to go practice the golf.
Yeah, he don't want me.
I don't know, I'm the superintendent. Listen, my question is, how are the visits? You're doing the same thing you did last year, that somebody is visiting every one of the graduates and everything?
Yeah. Were you going to talk about that?
No.
Okay, that's fine. So yes, today, actually, the senior class advisors made a trip around to all of the advisees' houses today with their lawn sign. And I don't know if they were all home, but the hope was that we were going to get most of the parents and students home because we did a blast last night to notify them we were going to be delivering. But they are, I can, I believe, yes.
I can remember how appreciative Matt King was when you went all the way up to Smithfield or wherever he lives at now. It showed up and it was just a tremendous surprise, but just a welcoming gift. Because Matt spent many years on this school too, so we're really appreciative of that effort. Uh, that's basically all I wanted to point out. I just think that position is just tremendous. I love the signs that I'm seeing and I'm really excited about our tennis players getting a chance to compete at the highest levels. So that's great.
Josh?
Um, I just have a couple of things. Uh, our school news team released a new episode. If you guys didn't see that, it just, also a lot of updates that are just going on at the high school. Um, and like some of our sports teams, of course, it's a little dated, just by like a week or so. Uh, but it's, it's definitely interesting. It's really fun. And that was our last episode of the, of this year. So hopefully we will have some more next year and hopefully more, uh, that. But it's also just, I guess, congrats all the NUIA people. I mean, and that, that's a lot of testing, especially for the juniors, and then they have to do their science testing afterwards. And then some of them have A P testing right after, so it's really, um, disco and moral support. And I have one more thing I wanted to, I have, oh, maybe I forgot. Uh, oh, yeah, uh, I, do I have, um, so I have one more meeting left, I guess? Because I graduated on the sixth and the next one's the second. Or am I done after this one? I, I don't, I don't know what's going to happen.
I would.
I would.
Nobody's going to come whip you with a wet new, you know, coming on the sixteenth, but I would like to see you come on the sixteenth.
Oh, on the, on the sixteenth as well?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay.
I'm going to use that. No.
Alan?
Well, before Alan speaks though, I was going to add some questions to Josh. Josh, you and Kenny Busky, Kenny Busky, you did, did a great job on your presentation promoting chicken sandwiches. And I've heard that you might be directly involved with the shortage of chicken sandwiches that everybody, you know?
Oh, um, I mean, I have, I've seen a couple of people do their, um, the honey mustard with the chicken sandwich. Just good stuff.
Okay, now, Alan Lee.
I, um, we touched a little bit today upon how like innovative and creative the teachers are, not just, I mean, especially this year, but also every year. And I, um, I took two new electives this year and those, I really enjoyed those. They have been really interesting. So I just, I think it's really amazing that the teachers are always willing to make up those new classes and those new instructions. And so I'm supportive of that. So thank you for that. And then also, I think a couple of people wrote about this, but the day of caring this year was a lot of fun. I, my group got to go to Camp Machalona and that is, I mean, it was a beautiful day and it was just so much fun. And we weren't sure if we were able to do that this year, so that was really great. Then also I'm just very happy about, um, the COVID, uh, the vaccine clinic that's being set up. So thank you for everyone who's involved in organizing that, so, yeah.
Great. And what were the two electives that you took that you really enjoyed?
Um, first semester I took computer programming with Ms. Voice and that was really cool because she took a course about that over the summer and she had us do a lot of cool different, um, programs and activities. And then right now I'm making a current events class with Mrs. Juliois and the, I mean, Mrs. Juliois is an amazing teacher and she puts so much effort into everything she does. And I mean, current events, oh, interesting, but especially this year, we've got a lot of cool topics to add into. And he's a really great group, so I've been really, really happy to be in that class.
Great. Thank you for sharing that so I can, you know, direct my.
So before we go to you.
Yes.
Um, I, I feel really embarrassed that I didn't, I mean, it's fairly significant that the, because all of you have asked. Uh, but we have set up, the clinic has been set up. Thank you for bringing it up, Alan Lee. It should be reflected in the minutes. I'd like to have it on my superintendent's report part. Um, it's tomorrow, right, Mr. Campbell?
Yes, tomorrow, basically start at nine o'clock and then we're going to have to finish.
Yeah, so it goes to high school, middle school tomorrow and then the, the ninth.
Well, then they go back on the tenth, Thursday to the tenth, hopefully probably at nine o'clock.
I know they were, um, they were making sure they could get both sessions, both things before school was done, so. And I can't thank T D Ross enough for, for taking the lead on that and getting it because having it done through Northern, Northern Light, which is a little frustrating because some of our closer area providers really weren't interested in helping us. It's very frustrating. Like they're, they're here, they're coming, so.
I know that Manchester is Northern Light as well. I'm sorry.
Can I ask a, just a question before you do the clue? Every year when you, we get around to graduation, I think of one thing that I'm not sure what the status is, but I would encourage the superintendent and the administrative team to look into, what are we doing to retain who our alumni are and how to contact them? It's amazing that at times you would like to take, have the alumni more involved, okay? It seems like maybe the class president has their own personal list, but I never found that the schools really did a good job of saving who the alumni were and what their, what the latest information they had was, even if it's when they graduated, but there's a street address, phone number. It's interesting that most of the email names, it appears to me over time, don't change that much. And actually, cell phone numbers don't tend to change now that you can transfer the, you know, from one company to the next. But you could tell me, I just think that we, we've always had close knit classes in particular and we've had really outstanding graduates. When you start to look around and find out what with the alumni have done individually, it is useful. And I used to spend a little bit more time on this because having met, you know, sitting in the town and talking to all the parents would say, you know, what's happening to your kid? But to find out, you know, some on Broadway and some with paper companies and some of special research people, a lot of lawyers. I mean, the point is, is that I think it's something we should be proud of and try to take in against our information and our ability to call upon these people at various times, even if only to visit the school or whatever it's about. So I'd like that county catch present too.
Uh, yeah, Scott, we're all pretty straight.
Yep. And the point is, is that, you know, some of us had a lot of fun going down to see them and paying the music fee or something. But anyway, the point is, is that I'd just like to see that enhanced, you know, something that, that we would have kids a regular file. So it's going on.
Uh, and if you jump into that, I mean, that we might, we have, we might be hiring here that graduated from here. That's kind of any thing to answer. Okay, so mine is just, I just want to say thank you to the teachers who sent these thank you cards. So meaningful. And I really appreciate you taking the time to let us know your feeling. So keep it up. And that's it for me. And now we need to go into executive session. So I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session to review the evaluation of the superintendent's first suitor. One M R S A 45, 405, 6A.
Second?
And second in discussion. All of the paper. Go passage in.